Oh, yeah. It'll have to be one of the silver ones. Okay, very good. All right, everybody, good evening. I'm calling to order the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five work session for City Council. We will begin with the roll call of members, Mr. Harris, if you would.
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Med?
Here.
Mr. Royal?
Here.
Mr. Gleese? Ms. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Diaz? Mr. Hirsch?
Here.
And President Baker?
Here. Counselor Gleese is excused this evening. We'll now move to the approval of the minutes of our June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five work session meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the meeting minutes. Counselors, any comments on them? Hearing none, Mr. Harris, if you would.
Mr. Med?
Aye.
Mr. Royal?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch?
Aye.
And President Baker?
Aye. Thank you. Counselors, this evening, we have a brief agenda that involves discussing the administrative code that was presented at our June seventeenth meeting. Public comment will be taken at the end of that discussion. And I want to just thank everyone for being patient with any audio issues. We're working on temporary equipment that is connected wirelessly to our speakers in the room. There may be interference in that, and we will try to work through that as best as we can. So I will now turn it over to Mr. Henbarger, who will lead our discussion.
Thank you. Thank you. So as a reminder, what you have before you is only about half of the admin code. The other half will be presented to you in August. This section deals mostly and primarily with financial policy and some other similar related matters. I reviewed with you, as we went through the screen, sort of the general topics of the general positions of all of the materials that are in what has been presented to date. I did receive two comments and/or questions from counselors, and I'd just like to address both of those. So we did receive one comment about the schedules for both the capital budget and the budget, and changing the name of budget activity to due date or something similar to that. And we certainly will do that. It was, I don't have the specific language, I believe you presented it, Mr. Hirsch.
Yeah, it was just a comment about, you know, I kind of thought, and I racked my brain as I looked at it again because I was like, I'm not sure, I mean, maybe it doesn't make much of a difference. But I thought, you know, having the budget activity, like the what on the far left, then the due date, and then who's responsible for it, would just kind of read better. Like, just the way it reads now, it kind of, like, the date isn't as relevant to people necessarily as like the what. And so if you start with the what and then say, like, so preparation of budget, when's it due? It's due on before the last meeting of council and the responsible parties. I mean, I might be splitting hairs, so I just.
Now, when I looked at it, when it came in, I thought it was a good suggestion. I've actually already implemented in draft format, so.
I agree with you, Counsel Hirsch, it reads better that way.
The second was really more a question about interpretation of the charter itself. The charter, as it relates to controller, sets forth the qualifications for the controller position. And there's a difference between controller and deputy controller, and one is mandatory and obviously one is not. So in the charter, and I'm just going to make sure I get you to the right section, the controller is Article Four, which starts at page twenty. And the prime, I mean, other than obviously being a twenty-one and a resident of the city for at least one year, the primary qualification is that you be a quote accountant. This is a carryover, this is the same provision that has existed for decades and decades under multiple versions of the Third Class City Code. The word accountant is not a defined term. In other words, that doesn't mean you, there's no law that says it has to be somebody who is certified public accountant. They could be. It is really, historically comes from the word, somebody who counts money. So it is open to interpretation as to what that means. The Government Study Commission determined to leave that to the voters to determine whether a person was qualified or not. That being said, the controller has expanded responsibilities, and the Government Study Commission acknowledging that thought that the controller may need assistance, technical and expertise, and if so, has the ability to request and appoint, may appoint, a deputy controller. In the instance that council approves the appointment of a deputy controller, the deputy controller has a requirement of being a certified public accountant, so that there is some guarantee to the city that the controller seeking additional expertise is actually seeking that of a certified public accountant, which is a licensed public accountant under Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and other states as well. So those were the two comments and/or questions we received in between last month's meeting and this month. Tonight, we are open to any discussion regarding any of the other provisions, and there may not be any. You may be satisfied with the drafts and to allow more discussion to happen when this comes up for vote. But if there are any questions regarding the provisions or any discussion about them, that's what we're here to do tonight. And I'll start by just asking, are there any?
Mr. Henbarger, I don't have any specific questions at this moment, but can you, can we reiterate where that controller section is in the document? I'm looking at page twenty, and I just don't see it, so I want to make sure I'm looking at the exact right spot.
Sure, and maybe my printing has page numbers different than yours.
Maybe it's the PDF is different than the printed.
It's Article Four.
Article Four.
And the accountant language is in Section four point oh three. It's four point oh three A. In the charter, not in the admin code.
Article Four, okay. Maybe I'm not looking at the quite right page, but.
Yeah, when I, when I asked, I'm sorry.
Is it Article Five?
When I asked the question, I asked the question, and I know I had either the section wrong or the article wrong.
Yeah, the elected controller under the charter is Article Four of the charter itself.
I'm seeing Article Four as salaries of elected officials, but.
Are you looking at? Are you looking at the admin code or the charter?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the admin code.
Right. So the charter, it's Article Four. This, keep in mind, remember.
Wrong tab.
Yeah, remember, remember, and this is for the public, too. This is, this is sort of just to remember that the real Bible is the charter. That's the part that we can't change, it's already been done, it's been approved by the electors of the city of Lancaster, and you, that is, that is sort of the law that we live by. So the charter has already determined through the government study process what the qualifications for the controller are, what the job responsibilities are.
Got it, okay, I thank you for that, I was, I was looking at the wrong tab. I appreciate that, and I see where we're looking. And I don't, I don't have anything further in this section of articles. Maybe we could go around and just make sure that everyone gets heard in case there's anything else.
And I'll just go around. Counsel, Counselwoman Craig?
I don't have anything further.
Councilman Arroyo?
I actually don't have any questions or comments. I thought, yeah, I thought the changes that were suggested during the last reading were very valid and, yeah, feel good about it.
Councilman Hirsch?
I just had one question. Section Three, which is on page twenty-five of the admin code that's before us, it talks about the sale of personal property. Am I correct? My understanding is that the threshold for sale of personal property, as far as like resolution approval by council, is about twenty-five hundred dollars. And is that coming from state law? Because I just didn't see that listed here, and, like, is there just superseding state law that governs that, or?
No, there's no, there's, again, what we had was the old Third Class City Code. Third Class City Code talks about two thousand dollars in terms of then requiring a formal bid process. Under two thousand dollars would still need to be approved by city council. So no matter what the amount, disposal of city property under the Third Class City Code would have to be approved by council. The, the language here has been written and suggested in terms of the personal property to allow operations to proceed efficiently and effectively, and also to make sure that the taxpayers are protected.
But to be clear, those thresholds that were aforementioned, those are still in place?
They're currently in place until the admin code is adopted. The admin code does not have any thresholds on personal property. So again, this is, this is a draft for your consideration. The code, if you were to take in a threshold right now, and there are no thresholds for requiring council approval. So if the city of Lancaster wanted to dispose of a laptop, theoretically, it would need council approval, regardless of the condition of that laptop.
Yeah, and I'm not saying, I mean, you know, maybe, I don't know what an appropriate threshold is, but maybe that's something we ought to consider.
Well, again, I think that the different language here is, keep in mind that council approval would be needed if the property has use. So if it's determined that it has no more use to the city, in this particular case, the way the provision is drafted, then the Director of Administrative Services can arrange for its sale. There's also provision in here that requires the director to adopt rules and regulations. That would be open to everybody, including city council, to see and weigh in on for the sale of personal property, which is very different than real estate, which, real estate, the provisions here model your existing ordinance.
Okay, thank you, no, that's helpful. That context kind of more answers my question on that. And as of right now, I don't, I don't really have much else, so.
Councilman Med?
Thank you. My only question is kind of a process question as it relates to budgets. With the charter and with adopting the new admin code, is there something that would prevent us, or would it be wise to put things in the admin code for future budgets? Like, like, for example, if council wanted to, you know, make it a requirement that a certain amount is in the critical repairs program each year. I mean, technically, that would have to be adopted and approved by each council for each subsequent budget moving forward. Or with the new charter, can we, you know, in the admin code, put certain budget allocations for future budgets, if that makes sense?
I understand the question. What I would say is, I mean, I don't have the case law to support it, but I think the answer is generally no. As a municipality, you have to allocate annually, and anything not listed isn't allocated and appropriated. And so I think you would be potentially violating the Pennsylvania Constitution if you did that. The reality is, it means that you're paying attention annually to that specific line item. If it's council, it's council's, ultimately, council's approval of the budget while the mayor presents it, it's council's budget. So if council wanted, didn't like the appropriation that was being suggested by the mayor, it could change it during that process. That doesn't mean that you can't, you know, be working in advance. Keep in mind, the budget process now starts considerably earlier, right? So we're starting here in months in advance. And council should be having and is going to be getting quarterly reports and monthly statements, but quarterly reports in particular. If these are things that the council is interested in having in the upcoming budget, that's a conversation that should be had with the Director of Administrative Services as early as possible each year.
Yeah, and I guess, like, if it was like, kind of like, you know, our reserve funds needs to be at X percent of the budget, or if we are, there's many different examples, but that's what I was wondering, kind of in like a good financial management way, is there, are, can, are we able to do that in like a one-shot through the code? Or does it have to be annual allocations?
Well, you always have to do annual, annual allocations. That being said, the admin code has set up a whole series of financial policies, financial guidelines. The policies ultimately will have to come back to you as they're completed that would have sort of target numbers for, say, debt service, target numbers for fund balances, et cetera. But you still have to go through the appropriation, allocation and appropriation process on an annual basis.
And I would just add that in contrast to the Home Rule Charter, which cannot be changed, the admin code can also be changed on a regular basis. And, and a budget is, my understanding has always been that a budget is an annual allocation and that you cannot make commitments for future budget years, but you can have policy guidance to direct the allocation or the capital, or capital reserves, or whatever policy statement there is. But annually, you would still need to have that budget allocation. And because it's an annual allocation, just the same, there's obviously policy that is embedded into a budget. At the same time, you can change the admin code. So even if you're trying to prioritize it through the admin code, the place where it is going to effectuate the most change is actually in the budget.
Yeah, and that was, that was really the basis of my question, was kind of from like the policy side, and like, can we set policies that would affect future budgets?
Yeah, and I think the answer there is really, you can't, you can't directly control the subsequent budget, you can only control the current one. That being said, you want to put policies in place that keep it, that direct the administration on how to administer the budget ordinance on an annual basis, right? So keep in mind, again, council sets the legislation, and the administration effectuates that legislation. So policy is helping them to make decisions, some of which require your approval. So certain changes in the budget during a year would require your approval. Certain expenditures that are not, that are not within budget lines would require council's approval. But even within ones that are allowed within the budget, there can be decisions to be made about the best way to handle it. And that guides not only the current practice, but then the drafting of the next year's budget.
And and just my, like, my final piece, kind of where, like, my thought process was going on this. You know, there's been a lot of talks about tax exemption. You know, there's, there's been a lot of talks about, you know, tax exemptions for low-income earners. And a question that did come into my mind was, you know, through the admin code, would we be able to exempt any future increases to earned income tax for low-income earners written in the admin code? I understand retroactively, we may not be able to do that for any future increases in earned income tax. Would that have to be done on a year-to-year budget? Or would we be able to put in the admin code that any future increases would not affect those making under twelve thousand?
The exemption has to be done by ordinance, and it will have to be done on an annual basis. Every tax is adopted annually, so you can't prescribe it going forward.
That concludes my questions, thank you.
Counselor Baker, I think we have consensus to move this section forward.
That's what I'm hearing. Counselors, are there any other discussion points for the sections that we are reviewing for this meeting? And I thank you for your questions and suggestions. I think we'll have more in the next section, so, okay, all right. So thank you very much, counselors, thank you, Mr. Henbarger. That will move us into our public comment period for this agenda. Public comment is open to members of the public. I would ask that if you have public comment that you step up to the microphone that's over there, so you can be heard in the room. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Please begin with your name and block of residence for our meeting record. If you have any comments, now is the time. You may need to turn that microphone on, thank you.
Tony Dastro, seven hundred Block, New Holland Avenue. A variety of minor concerns, but I'll just start with my biggest concern, which is I actually think Article Five of the admin code usurps the authority of the Ethics Commission. That was expressly written under Article Twelve. I do understand the logic, but I think the Ethics Commission needs to have their input on that. And it needs to be part of the ethics code, not the administrative code.
Mr. Dastro, just a quick response to that.
Mr. Henbarger, can you wait until Mr. Dastro has concluded his three minutes? Thank you.
So, yeah, but to some earlier points made by people up on the day, or rather, at the table. The charter is the Bible, and let me actually look up something in my three minutes. I could be wrong, but I do believe that the charter can be amended through referendums so long as it's not affecting the government structure. Some of my other concerns to these proposed administrative code changes, I think, are appropriate there through that mechanism. I think there are some ways the city's opening itself up to legal challenges between the powers of itself, frankly, because there's language not included in the charter that the administrative code puts different prescriptions onto. So, yeah, I think a lot of this does make sense. I think there's a lot of logic and reason, but I think the process through which a lot of this is being done isn't congruent without how it needs to occur. So I'll save the extra forty-five seconds of my time and give it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dastro. Mr. Henbarger?
Article Five deals with confidential information. As I indicated last month, we have not yet drafted an ethics code. That is to be waited until the Ethics Commission has its first meeting and starts working, makes recommendations to council. Again, under the charter, the Ethics Commission does not draft the ethics code, rather, it makes recommendations to council. Those will, those, those recommendations will then be taken, incorporated into a draft, which would be ultimately incorporated. But the ethics code has not yet been done.
So that larger section will be in the next set of discussions?
It will not.
Oh, okay, because they need to draft it.
Because the Ethics Commission will not have done all of its work yet. So that will be sort of an ongoing plug-in. So that will be sort of an ongoing plug-in as we move forward.
But it will be finished before we would approve?
That's the goal.
The admin code, okay. So it will be a part of what this body votes to approve?
Yeah, either way, the ethics code can be separate or part of the admin code. Either way, the ethics code has a different timeframe for adoption.
I see.
Under the admin code, under the charter. The ethics code has to be adopted within twelve months, the admin code within eighteen. So no matter what, this council has to approve an ethics code by the end of the year. It is the hope that the logical place for it is ultimately within the admin code. So the concept is to try and merge the recommendations of the Ethics Commission into ethics code provisions that will be inserted into the admin code.
Thank you. I'm inclined to agree, counselors. I think we need to, it's important to have this process wrapped up for, in both cases, the end of the year, despite the timeframe being longer for the admin code. Before a new council is seated, before a new mayor is seated, I think it's extremely important. So, thank you for that. Are there any additional comments from the public this evening? All right, hearing none, then we have reached the conclusion of the agenda for this evening. I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.